I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the world.
Thank you. Hey, look at that. I've even got flags in my screen now, too.
Oh, that's right. You had one behind you.
That's correct. Okay, public comments. I don't think we have any, any members of the public joining us tonight so far, so we'll go on. Deion, I don't think there's any correspondence. Okay, we'll skip that. First, selectmen's report. Got a bunch of things to cover with you. One, two, three, four, five topic areas. First, police station firing range. We received the final engineering report by Beck Engineering. That's the firm that we hired to do the, the final third-party examination of the wall and roof. That was delivered to Downs. It was also delivered to Nancy Ryan, Chair of the Public Site and Building Commission. And we are scheduling a face-to-face meeting with all the parties concerned, which I believe is going to be next week sometime. Haven't heard from everybody, but I think we're very close to a resolution on that. So before we get into, and here's Marty. So, sorry about the trouble. So we're continuing to push that forward as quickly as possible. Charter commission, as I discussed in the last-
Hear anything?
We can hear you. Marty, can you hear us? Can you hear me?
I can hear you. I didn't hear you for a second.
Oh, okay. Charter commission, at the last meeting, I talked about how we will need an executive order from the governor's office, and the governor's council is willing to consider that and bring it forward. I talked to Nick Viti tonight, and we should have language drafted within the next couple of days. So we'll send that up, and we'll keep pushing that forward.
Matt, let me interrupt you on that. This is the charter revision, you said?
Yep, yeah.
Are they leaning in the direction to waive it so that we can go to a referendum?
Yes. Yeah, yeah. As a matter of fact, I spoke with the governor's council on that, and if he wasn't willing, if they, if they were, if they didn't think that this was the right thing to do, they wouldn't ask us for some suggestions on, on the language. So what we're doing is, Deion put together the timeline for me, like the dates that every, every step along the way and where we left off. We're going to send that up to Hartford, along with some language suggested from, from Nick Viti, and then they're going to try to craft an executive order to help us out with that. Or fit it into one of the, one of the current ones. So-
Okay, thank you. Because I, of cour-, I think we have until about, what, the May 15th or May 17th?
Well, if we can get this order, they're gonna, they're gonna like back up the whole schedule and, and like where we left off.
All right.
It's like, like a time warp, is what we're asking for. So move we add the COVID-19. The good news is that the rate of infections in the town of Bethel are dropping in the post-holiday period, like the weekend, first week and second week after New Year's. The positivity rate had spiked up to almost 12% in Bethel. It's down to 8.1 and continuing to drop. If there's any cautionary news, it is that I was on a conference call this evening with state, the state health department, and the state, the chief epidemiologist believes that the, the more virulent strains, the variations that are out there have arrived in Connecticut, and he believes that they will be the dominant form of the virus in Connecticut by, by the end of March. So they're saying it's, it's time to just go through one more season of, of extreme caution. They're, they're recommending, along with the CDC, that people double mask for extra safety. They, they said that 150 citations have been issued around the state for non-compliance with mask laws and gathering laws, and they're encouraging municipalities to issue those if you have either people or businesses who are not compliant. We have not had that problem in Bethel, but they're, they're really trying to crack down because moving on to the next issue, the vaccine program, it's still going to be several months before we get to anything like, anything approaching even 50% of the population being vaccinated, let alone herd immunity. Bethel's clinic operation began on Saturday for the first time. The clinic opened up in the track and field center at Bethel High School. We are sharing resources with the town of Reading. So volunteers from Bethel and Reading staffed the clinic, and I was there helping with the check-in process. So the, the, the only problem with it was that we were only allocated 100 doses for that first, for that first Saturday. And of course, those are gonna, those are going to the 75-plus age group. There will be another clinic coming up this weekend by appointment only. Laura is hoping to get 300 doses this time. But until the federal government really ramps up the production, it's still going to be many months before we get into the general population and able to vaccinate them. However, Bethel has actually so far managed to successfully vaccinate 47% of that population, of the 75-plus. Almost half of them have received the vaccination because many of them have gone to Danbury Hospital and gotten it through the BAM system, which is separate from the town. The last thing I wanted to bring you up to date on is the state legislative session is underway for 2021. There are, as usual, there are a whole bunch of things that we have to keep an eye on that are not necessarily good. There's a proposal for a mansion tax, which would be a one-mill surcharge on properties with an assessment above $300,000. There's also a bill being introduced into committee that would put a penalty tax on properties where towns have not reached, have not yet reached the 10% threshold for affordable housing. These are terrible, terrible proposals. They, they probably don't stand a chance of being passed, but we need to watch them and make our voices heard nonetheless. On the positive side, there are several environmental initiatives that have been introduced that will help municipalities like ours reduce the cost of recycling and waste management. One of them is an EPR program on gas cylinders. EPR is Extended Producer Responsibility. And that would work like the paint care program, where the producers of propane tanks actually fund a program to pick up gas, empty gas cylinders, because they, they are extremely dangerous if they get into the waste system and they, because they can explode with the residual gas that's on the inside. If you, in fact, if you even go to our transfer station right now, you'll see a mountain of these things, because there, there isn't anybody that picks them up. There are scrap metal dealers who will sometimes come and get them, but it's a real problem. There's also going to be an EPR program proposed for disposal of tires that will hopefully clean up the abandoned tires you find on roadways and waterways. There may be a state ride requirement for unit-based pricing on waste disposal, which has been shown to vastly reduce the amount of disposed household waste. And last but not least, there are proposals for raising the deposit on, on, on the bottle bill from five cents to 10 cents, including deposits on bottles for wine, liquor, sports drinks, and also nips, you know, the little single-serve alcohol's bottles. And the additional revenue from that additional deposit would be going, would go into programs that come back to municipalities to offset the cost of disposal and to improve recycling programs. So those, those things are going to be, we're going to be watching very carefully, and as bulletins come out, I'll, I'll send those out so that, that you guys have those. So that's it for the selectmen's report. Rich and Paul, do you guys have any questions or anything you want to add?
Yeah, just, just a quick, quick question for Marty. The, the legal stuff where we need for the charter review, I'm sorry, the fire commission. Where are we on that?
Well, I haven't, I guess I gotta put, I, I wasn't aware that we were going to discuss this tonight, but what's got to be done is I gotta do up the publication notice.
Okay.
And what, what happens is when the publication notice is done, then the board should approve it, and then it goes in the newspaper, and it, and it also advertises for a public hearing date.
Okay, all right. I guess we should just move, go forward on it.
Yep, yep. I plan to do that, with the date today. Yeah, second, second, second meeting this month.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Anything else? Rich, do you have anything? Nope, don't think so. Okay. Oh, yeah, go ahead, Rich.
I had it unmuted. Out of that, 100 people that got vaccinated, how many were from Bethel and how many were Reading? Do you have an idea?
Yeah, 60 from Bethel, 40 from Reading.
Thank you.
You're welcome. It's, yeah, it splits according to population, so it's about a 60-40 split.
I have to say, it was well-organized, too.
That's right, yeah. Saw you there.
Yep.
Yeah. I, I'll tell you what, you know, the, the supply of vaccines is pretty limited right now, but Laura, I have to give credit to Laura, Tommy Galliford, the cert team, the cert, the community emergency response team, and the, the health department official from the town of Reading, Doug Hartline, and their volunteers, they have all done a fabulous job of organizing that. So my hat's off to all of them. They did a wonderful job. Okay, moving on to item number five, consideration of the minutes of January 19th. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Paul, second by Rich. Any, any corrections or comments, changes?
No.
In hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. Item number six, consideration of tax refunds. I'll put a motion on the floor that we approve at the request of Mrs. Gekko, the tax collector, refunds in the amount of $14,807.16. These are for overpayment of taxes. And Paul seconded that. Any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That carries. And item number seven, discussion of public site and building committee monthly reports. So we have two reports, and Nancy is joining us. Thank you very much, Nancy. We appreciate you being here tonight. So you wanna, so you provided two, two reports, but you want to cover any highlights from those?
So generally, the, the monthly report that I sent is actually almost a month old. Every month, at the beginning of the month, at our first meeting, first meeting of the month for the Public Site and Building Commission, our owner's rep, STV, provides us with a, a monthly update. So what, what's in that report is it's already been done or taken care of, et cetera. So it's almost a month old. So the highlights were actually in the smaller version, which I covered both the school renovation project and the police station. And I'll just, I'll start with the police station, just because that's shorter. So we still are waiting for a CO, because the, the main part of the building, the main part of the building and the firing range have two different building permits, because we started the firing range later. So the main part of the building has a temporary CO, and after they moved in, in the late fall of 2018, and in 2019, throughout the year, there were some issues that had come up that needed to be repaired, the flagpole lights, et cetera. So all that got taken care of. But then no one notified Chris Baldwin that it was time to get the CO taken care of. I thought Downs was taking care of it, since they pulled the CO, and so I was back and forth with them a few times now. You know, Chris has gone through all his lists of things that he wanted to make sure were completed and taken care of, because he had a whole long list from probably the end of 2018. So that's been done, and we should have that CO very soon, which would, which would be great, because we don't want to have that building continue on with a temporary CO. Firing range is in your court right now, so we're having the meeting on that hopefully next week, et cetera. Come up with a plan for that. And we did receive an application for payment from Downs in November 2020, and we were waiting before we addressed that to get the CO. It, it does contain monies owed to them. Mostly the larger amounts are for Earthmovers, because they had a bunch of site work they had to finish, and for Ferguson Electric, because they had some electrical things that they needed to take care of. Smaller amounts going to, you know, finishing the lockers and some other small items. And it's an amount that, it is an amount that we owe them with, I think it's about a 70, $170,000, with about $84,000 left to be owed to them. But that's part of the contingency, so it may not be something that we end up paying to them. And on the school projects, both schools were open right at the beginning of the school year, since Bethel schools have mostly remained open or hybrid with a few shutdowns here and there. But both Rockwell and Johnson opened in September. All, both was temporary COs, because there was work continuing in the gym in both buildings and some other small areas. The, generally, the classrooms, the administration suite, et cetera, were all up and running. Right now, both of the gyms in both schools, so since I wrote that, the gyms have been mostly completed. I think Rockwell's completed. Johnson still has some bleachers that need parts, and they're working on that. One of the good things that came up in, over the past two months, Dr. Carver, along with help from Geraldine, our owner's rep from STV, put together a proposal to the state to, and that's part of the report there. So $936,000 to move that, that amount from the Johnson School budget, the approved Johnson, state-approved Johnson School budget, to the state-approved Rockwell School budget to cover most of the additional abatement costs that we encountered at Rockwell. What this does is it makes it so that we, the town, can get reimbursed for that amount. Because when the state, when they went to the state with the budgets for both schools, the amount for Rockwell was pretty much written in stone. Once they accepted, the amount for Johnson was written in stone. But you get a one-time shot sometimes to ask for a change. So this, that change was granted, so that keeps us right now, at our last meeting, Geraldine reported that we were still about at the 42% reimbursement threshold, which is, is good. And we are behind schedule on both schools. Rizzo had put together a phasing plan, and that phasing plan has not been met. We, they were supposed to be pretty much done by December. And right now, they're saying they're going to be done mid-February, except for site work at both schools. Johnson has more site work to be done, partly because we, we added some things, like dealing with the dirt pile out back and making that soccer field larger, but there's some other site work items that they did not get to before the cold weather. And there's a punch list ongoing, little things here and there. This is scratched, that doesn't open right, et cetera. One of the larger things at Rockwell that's being dealt with, and it should be finished over this weekend, was a section of the bathroom floors, the second floor ba-, these are student bathroom floors. From above, everything seemed okay. When they had to do some demolition below and look up, and the demolition wasn't part of dealing with the bathroom, was something else, they could see that, so the, the floors built with a corrugated steel pan and concrete poured on top of that, and the corrugated steel pan was rusting badly. And so a structural engineer came over, took a look at it, determined that a section had to be cut out, and it couldn't be done from below. It had to be done from above. So they cut that section out. They had to close the bathroom down for like a week. So right now, they're after hours, the concrete's been poured again. They're dealing with putting the tile back in, putting toilet petitions back in, putting the toilets back in. They say that hopefully next week, Monday, that bathroom will be reopened. And the playgrounds have been completed, certified. They had to be certified by somebody, I can't remember who, but they're certified, not by the building official, but by somebody who does that to say that they're safe, and the kids are just having a blast. I keep seeing both principals posting pictures on Facebook of, doesn't matter the weather, maybe they're not out there now, but before the snow came, the kids were out there having a blast on the playgrounds. So that's kind of high points. So as I said, the, we didn't hit that scheduled deadline for completing, and this wasn't completing the entire project. This was completing major parts of the project with a few punchless items going, and we weren't at that place at the beginning of December. But they've made great progress, especially over the holiday break. And anytime there's no school, or schools let out early or whatever, they're in there finishing things up. Any questions?
Nancy, I, I have to compliment you. You must have the patience of a saint, especially on the police station project. Have you seen anything of the results of the consulting firm, what they're recommending?
Um, yes, I have read the reports.
And what's your thoughts? Are we, are we, are we compromising too much in favor of the construction company?
I, well, I, I don't know what decision was made yet, so I know that, that there was the specific step-by-step process that was outlined by Downs more than a year ago that basically includes the information kind of taken out. It was mostly the Hoffman reports, and then after the second, when the first, the visit from Hoffman, the site visit, and a lot of us were there, but then Hoffman stuck around afterwards and really kind of went over the outside of the building, marking all kinds of places where they thought the mortar should be removed and then re-pointed. CT Masons came back with their own report and basically said you don't really need to do that, and suggested the, that elastomeric coating. And that sort of seemed to be the way to go at the time. Now Beck has come up with a different idea, because in looking at doing the elastomeric coating, the concerns for most of us is that we have to do that every so many years.
Yeah.
On one hand, you can look at it as you, you gotta paint your house every so many years. On the other hand, a block building shouldn't leak.
Yeah, require that.
Yeah. So I, what I got on an opinion from my reading the letter from Downs, or not, I, I made it sound like, sorry, my computer fan keeps coming on.
Although there was a motorcycle going by.
Yeah, in the middle of winter, it's a snowmobile. And a snowmobile. My feeling from the letter from Downs was that they were looking to do something with inside their contract, within, with inside their GMP, doing the EIFs system that Beck has not, I guess, chosen was not the right word, but has said could possibly be a better solution.
It's an alternative, yes.
An alternative. I, I don't think Downs is going to cover that. I think that might be something that, if we do, we might have to pay for it.
Well, that's the purpose of next week's meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. I, I just want to throw this out, because I, I know you, you've got a payment due on the, the main part of the building for a certificate of occupancy. And let, let me be the negative guy right here. If we give that, that approval, and if we have to go to litigation, Marty, would the court say, okay, you approved that one part, but this other part, it's same, same building as far as the court looks at it? So you, you guys have to eat it as far as what they're recommending?
I don't know if you have to eat it. I think you've got to make it clear that you're, you could say that you're paying it under protest. You know, let them know that there's problems, but you need to move on for the rest of the building. But, you know, Paul, the, the reason, one of the reasons why we have a meeting is, can I put this? We have a lot of conflicting information as to what the cause of the problem is. And it's, it's very difficult to try to pin anybody down or say anything about it. And that's one of the things I want to sit down and talk to them about as well. I mean, the, the, what they suggested, what Beck suggested, the system that what Nancy mentioned, the EFIS, you know, Downs came back and said, well, that may be, but we still have questions about that, too. You know, so I don't know if there's some drawbacks to it or not. I'd like to know that, too. And all that is, is just a different type of coating that'll last longer. And that was my point, you know. I had a conversation with Attorney Robinson this morning, and I told him, I said, the problem that I have is, you know, when you, if you had somebody put up a block garage, you wouldn't expect the water to come through the blocks. You know, maybe, maybe 20 years from now, you know, when it starts to deteriorate. And I said, that's the issue that we have, that, you know, we, we should have a building that we don't have to worry about for 15 or 20 years, you know, and, and Downs and Hoffman, both of them, and even Beck in the original report, have made it clear that it's not a permanent solution. What they're talking about, they're talking, you know, go through everything and then coat the building with, I don't know what's the terminology, Nancy, what's, what's the coating?
It's like, it's like an elastomeric or latex kind of coating, yeah.
They've all indicated that it could only last five, six years, and that's it. We gotta do it again. It's one of the things I think we want to talk about.
Yeah, okay. You know, like I say, we, we've had a, I, I view it as, as a defective building. And I, I, we look for something that's maintenance-free and-
Listen, I, I don't think anybody disagrees with you, as between the town of Bethel, you know, the construction company, the architect, everybody that was involved in this, the town of Bethel's the innocent party here. The problem is, is you still, even if you do go to court, you've got to pin it down as to who's responsible. You know, and, and right now, we're struggling with that.
No, okay. Exert a little pressure on it, but Nancy, listen, thank you. I mean, like I said, you've got a, you've got the patience of a saint. Just the other way around. Marty knows that.
We'd like, we'd like to get it done, and as far as the payment goes, I, I do understand your point, Paul, because, you know, if we pay this amount, they, Downs could say, okay, bye. But at the same time, I know the money that's owed to certain people, like, you know, Eddie Killian of Earthmovers, he deserves to be paid for the money.
Yeah, I understand that.
That he finished more than a year ago.
Yeah, I understand that. But good job, Nancy, really.
Thank you.
I wouldn't want to be in your shoes, because I would be, I'd be probably sitting in Marty's office.
I do email Marty a lot.
Go ahead, Marty.
Too much, probably.
I was wondering if I could ask Nancy a question about the schools. Generally, I received something today from Bob Kislowski. What's happened is there's a company for one of the schools, you know, I don't have it in front of me. They're owed about $28,000 to $30,000. They've contacted Travelers. They want to pull the performance bond. And I've heard through the grapevine that there's several other companies, too, that are complaining that they haven't been paid. Do you know what's going on with Rizzo on this?
I don't know specifically. I, I've, I've asked them to check into it, because the one company, because I had heard from, I, I don't remember if it was Geraldine, well, Geraldine, but then also, I think Finance, somebody in Finance might have told me, too, where there's one company called Young Developers. They're the roofers at Rockwell. They are claiming that they haven't been paid since October. That may be the case, but in, in Rizzo's applications for payment, each contractor that's finished a certain amount of work by percentage, they have the documentation for it. So when we get an application for payment from Rizzo, it's like this thick. It's like an inch, two inches sometimes. So there's the cover page, which is certified, notarized, signed by the architect, signed by everybody. And then all the pages that follow list, and there's probably three or four pages of contractors that have put in their own applications to Rizzo for payment. Young Developers, maybe their contract was, let's say, I know it was 700-something. Let's say it was 750. They, they might be already paid 730, and they're owed, you know, $30,000 or $20,000, but they're not done yet. So if they're not done yet, they shouldn't be paid.
Well, plus, I think the one that was today, not Young, it was somebody else.
Okay. And I, I don't know if Rizzo's behind, and I don't know how their internal workings go. I mean, when, when we have a meeting on a Tuesday, and there's an app, we get the monthly application for payment, we approve it if it's correct, because if it's not correct, we don't approve it. We approve it, it gets to finance Thursday morning. Kathy gets the minutes and such in, and- We approve it, it gets to Finance Thursday morning. Kathy gets the minutes and such in, and it's approved and signed by me, and the check goes out to Rizzo. So if Rizzo's not paying, if they're not up to date on their payments, unfortunately, what some people are doing, I think Ed Killian from the Earthmovers did it with the police station. They call Finance directly. And, and, you know, sometimes Finance lets me know, they let me know about Eddie Killian. I called him and spoke with him and told him, the town really can't do anything. Their contract is with the, you know, with Killian for Earthmovers, with police station, it's with Downs, with the schools, with Rizzo, and they have to get that, get after them for the payments.
Well, I, I think what I'll do is I'm just going to call probably somebody at Rizzo just to see if there is an issue. What's the issue? What's the problem?
Yeah.
Things, you know.
Marty, you don't know who the contractor is, do you?
I can't remember off the top of my head.
Is it Ferguson by any chance? I mean, there, there's some, there's some items in dispute that the committee is holding off on paying.
No, I believe that. I just, I don't remember who it was, though.
Right.
Print it out, water with me. I didn't.
Yeah. Well, and it's not specifically that we're holding off paying. There's some change orders that we haven't approved yet because some of the amounts are being negotiated on behalf of us by Rizzo, and they're actually doing a pretty good job on some of them.
I, I could understand if if they were pressuring the town because they thought they should be paid or anything. But to go beyond that and actually make a claim with the bonding on the performance on it's more than just a little bit of a dispute someplace.
Right.
That, you know, it takes a lot of moxie to do that if, in fact, you are arguing over what wasn't done right or something like that, you know?
Right, which would be good to know the company, because we, like, with this young developers, they weren't, they're not finished with the roof at Rockwell. They may have finished, hopefully they finished before the snow because they had like two days worth of stuff to do last week, and they were supposed to finish. But they also messed some things up and had to redo that, so.
What I'll do is I'll, I'll copy it tomorrow to Rich and Nancy and wherever else you want me to, so you can see who it is.
Okay.
Okay.
And then I can make some suggestions as to who specifically at Rizzo you might want to contact because, you know, they're like Ken Hunt, who's the project manager, he's like the big on the site guy. I mentioned it to him, and he goes, oh, I'll check into it. You know, he's not there when they write the checks out, so I don't know if he knows. You know, he might need to go up another step to find out if there are issues and like that.
Okay, all right, thanks.
All right, so my plan is to do another report. So if we're going to do them quarterly, I'm going to try to keep up with it. I missed Fall because of election, but hopefully I won't have to do that anymore. So maybe the beginning of, maybe the first, beginning of April, maybe that meeting?
Sure.
And then again, you know, June, September, like that.
Okay.
Okay, and if you have, you know, what I could do is continue to send that monthly report. I know Matt gets it because he's on the distribution list that Geraldine sends all the documents out to. But, you know, I can send it separately if you want to share it with the other.
We can, we can send it to all three of us. That's, that's
Okay, all right.
All right. Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, thanks.
Have a good night.
Yep.
Moving on to item number eight, consideration of reappointment of Town Council. Marty, was your sentence up? Is that what what happened here?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I don't think I'm going to get a reprieve.
Well, I should ask you, you, you do want to keep doing this, right?
Yes, I'll be happy to serve now.
All right, well, I'll put a motion on the floor that we reappoint Martin J. Lawler as Town Council for the town of Bethel, Connecticut, their second. Rich, Rich seconded. Any discussion?
Any pro bono?
Well, I'll tell you what.
You just don't know it.
Okay.
Yeah, you're right. Well, Marty, we appreciate your expert advice and very, very happy that you are agreeing to continue on with it. So I'll try your minds, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That carries. Thank you very much, Marty. Appreciate it. One last thing before we get to the, to the main event tonight, consideration of appointments, we have two that were held over from the last meeting. First one is appointment to the Public Site and Building Committee. I would make a motion that we reappoint Dino Galtieri.
Second.
Committee, and Paul seconded. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that carries. And second to the Housing Authority, I did receive an email today from Beth Kavagna. She would like to continue serving. He's done a great job, so I'm going to make a motion that we reappoint Beth Kavagna to the Housing Authority.
Second.
Second by Paul. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Mute that. Okay, so we're on to the final item. I see Phyllis Kansky and John Shay have joined us, so first, I'm going to make a motion that we go to executive session, inviting in Town Council Martin Lawler, Labor Counsel John Shay, our HR Director Phyllis Kansky, and Deon Craig, our Administrator. So is there a second to that motion? Okay, second by Paul. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we will enter as soon as Deon stops the and we'll put a motion on the floor that we approve the successor agreement for the, between the town of Bethel and the United Public Service Employees Union, Local 424, Unit 45, for the dispatch contract running through June 30th, 2023. And Paul seconds, and Rich seconds. Any further discussion on that?
No.
And hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That carries. Thank you very much. And by the way, the Dispatch Union themselves ratified this on, I think it was January 21st, so we will sign this and we'll be all set.
I'd just like to say thank you to the dispatchers integral part of the town.
Yes, absolutely.
Matt, just a quick question. Did we cover consideration of tax refunds?
Yeah, yeah, we voted on that.
Okay, getting senile here.
Well, is that we were, we're all still struggling trying to get the Zoom to work, so. Okay, so that concludes our agenda for tonight. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Second by Paul and seconded by Rich. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, thank you very much, everyone, and thanks, John. Thanks, Phyllis. And everybody have a good night.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Night.
Good night.